Okay, I think we're ready. Everyone is here. Let's get started for our board meeting may tend. If we have everyone in attendance, if you could all rise for the collective meeting. Thank you. Mr. Audi, could you announce our executive?
Yes, we were in executive session today from six thirty till seven, I'm sorry, seven o'clock to seven thirty-five. Thank you.
Thank you. And on to visitor comments. We have a few people signed in today. I'll just remind you that comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, and they're to provide input to the board on items that are for us to vote. They must be, these speakers must be district residents and sign in. And because this is a business meeting, there will not be a response period for the superintendent or board members. So the first speaker we have is Ms. Maria Alt.
I have a question. Before I speak, is my speech, can that go into the meeting minutes?
We do, we don't typically put the speeches into the minutes.
If I send it to you, could you put it in?
We don't, we don't typically do that. Mr. Audi, if you would like to answer that?
Yes, we can.
You can?
We can include it into the minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
I can email it. I can show what deals. I'm here tonight as a parent to represent true unity and not division. The diversity, inclusion, and equity services proposal written by Dr. Joseph Allen was approved by the Southern High School Board on June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. Diversity, inclusion, and equity are euphemisms for critical race theory. Critical race theory will never be the answer to society's race problems. It's not only not the answer, but it's harmful. There are many reasons critical race theory is harmful. The biggest reason being defined every human based on race. The intent of the school board is good. However, there are better alternatives to this DEI proposal. I agree that racism exists within all races. However, I disagree on Southern High's parent solution of using this DEI proposal. Diversity, equity, inclusion, and critical race theory, as a person eloquently stated, fosters a mentality in which students who never thought about race when they looked at a person now look at people entirely in terms of their race. This type of training devalues a person, further divides people, promotes hate, is racist, and will lead to the destruction of our country. The major problem with critical race theory is that it sees racism everywhere and in anything, and that the most important thing value is your race. According to Dr. James Lindsay, he wrote many, many reasons critical race theory is terrible when we're dealing with racism. And again, DEI is the euphemism for critical race theory. CRT believes racism is present in every aspect of life, every relationship, and every interaction. CRT says white people only give black people opportunities and freedoms, but it is also in their own interest. See what's being, is again. Hi, what did you mean when you get my time off?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Out of nowhere.
About, yeah, about one and a half minutes left. You have one and a half minutes left.
It went out, it went out at one fourteen.
One fourteen.
Um, critical race theory only treats race issues as socially constructive groups, so there are no individuals in critical race theory. Critical race theory believes science, reason, and evidence are a white way of knowing, and that storytelling and lived experience are a black alternative. Critical race theory rejects all potential alternatives like colorblindness as words of racism. Critical race theory acts like anyone who disagrees with it must do so for racist and white supremacist reasons, even if those people are black. This entire DEI proposal, which is a standard training program, suggests indoctrinating teachers on critical race theory, which leads the teachers to indoctrinate our children with it. Southern High hired consultant Dr. Joseph Allen, and Dr. Allen, along with all the authors listed as references in this proposal, strongly support critical race theory. Even in this proposal, in the reference section under the reference cell, it says critical race theory. Part of this needs assessment is the climate survey that Dr. Allen is using, which is faulty and collects misleading data. Therefore, it was shown statistically incorrect data to determine whether our school is racist. The main issue with this survey being that it is anonymous and been taken by a portion of people multiple times. In the year two thousand and twenty-one, the United States of America.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up.
I have just a little, I just have a little bit left. May I finish it? Please, is that okay? It's only, it's only a little bit more.
I, I would think, I'm afraid if we do that, then we'll have to do that for everyone. But we'll, we'll accept your written statement into the record.
Do I need more time?
The time is already included, I believe. I mean, if the, if the, if the board wants to allow for, yes, that's, it's up to them, but I'm trying to just keep some.
Can, can we, can you wrap up in the next fifteen seconds? Can you just wrap up what you were saying?
I have like eighty-one minutes and fifteen seconds?
I, I have, we have to be fair with three minutes. But Mr. Audi did mention that we could put it into the minutes. He did acknowledge that at the, at the start of the meeting.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, Mr. Jimmy.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just switch my, what I was going to say, thank you. Um, in the year two thousand and twenty-one, the United States of America is the most diversified since it's ever been. Most, if not the majority of U.S. citizens see people as people regardless of the color or race of that person. I think the real issue is that no one seems to be getting to the root of the problem with racism. I propose instead.
Thank you. I, we can't, we can't allow you to continue.
I'm on the last stage.
No, we can't, I'm sorry. We'll let that go into the record. Thank you.
Moving on, we have Mr. Dave Alt.
Can I have a request? I have a request. I believe it is still the rule to be wearing a mask properly, covering the nose and mouth for those of us that are in the same room.
Any more to speak? I can hear you, yes, right?
Yes.
I'm here as an adult. Been a resident here for eighteen, twelve years. My kids go here, I love this school. Everyone here, I'm pretty sure, loves this school. We all have a portion of our lives that we're all, I believe, trying to get to the same, we're trying to get to the same goal, keep an eye, take care of our children. There's like different ways to get that, to get that, I agree. If you have a question about, I'm a hundred percent against critical race theory. A hundred percent against it. My children are part white, and part black, part American Indian, or a part Hispanic, or a, anything American, or Native American, or Iraq. That's who my kids are. Again, I'm a woman. I have to fight this. I cannot even attempt to put this into the school for my kids to not hate their one white side, but then feel a presence on the other side. That's all we ask. We, as a country, as humans, as people in this society, have to fight for everything we have. For all people. It is what it is. I, I can't believe this. And this is coming straight from me to you guys. All right, God bless us.
Okay, moving on, we have Ms. Erica Osteve.
Hi, my name is Erica Osteve. My daughter attends Hope Well Elementary and is in first grade virtually. I stand before everyone as a mother advocating for what's right, safe, and what matters. My daughter matters. You see, she's finding an invisible illness that is still undiagnosed. She deserves the same education as the rest of the children do. I pay the same taxes, and yet I haven't heard a third option yet for this next upcoming school year. Neither option worked for my child. Other districts are keeping virtual, why can't we? One class for each grade for just one more year. It gives scientists time to make a safe vaccine so I can send my child to school safely. My daughter had a wonderful experience with Team Thirty-four, Mrs. Liza Powsky. This teacher went above and beyond for our children. She made this pandemic easier on everyone. She gave my daughter consistency that an uncertain terrifying opponent. She gave support however it was needed. Mrs. Liza Powsky taught my daughter independence. She pulls our schoolwork by herself and has been doing it for months. The only point she needs help with when they have technical difficulties. My daughter has excelled in virtual school. She has learned so much and has been kept safe doing so. Please consider virtual, it works. My daughter is living proof. Please give families unwanted one more year. Our stress levels aren't the same in fighting a pandemic and an unknown diagnosis for illness at the same time is incredibly difficult. Our children deserve a safe and excellent education with Southern High School District teachers virtually. I would like to thank Mrs. Liza Powsky, Mrs. Bane, Mrs. Willing, Mrs. Cazada, and Mrs. Limpar for being my daughter's brave support team and cheerleaders. No words can express my gratitude. Thank you.
Next, we have, and I apologize ahead of time because I'm going to mess up the vaccine, and Ms. Amanda, like, you know, I can't.
Personal, I don't know where I go. I also have the shorts for a problem. Good evening. My name is Amicia Fertino. I am a professor of education and child development, a doctorate student, and a parent in the district and a minority. I've come tonight to share my opinion on the need to implement a community-wide effort to educate on the topic of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I am aware that many community members have concerns about implementing critical race theory. This is understandable, as the suggestion to adjust someone's mental model is a difficult one that involves activating the entire fight or flight system and puts people on the defensive. That said, we know for the many racially charged incidents that have been publicized and the countless incidents that members in the community can speak to that aren't publicized, we have an issue in this community that has finally become more polarized in recent years. As someone who teaches a course on diversity, equity, and inclusion as it relates to early childhood, I think it has to be important to having these conversations starting in preschool. They can be done in a way that's developmentally appropriate and works equally on social emotional skills, as well as acknowledging that inequity exists and to not be a bystander. If you're worried about your population trial, you'll feel guilty and it will be troubling for them, maybe try refraining your thinking. You're giving your children access to information that will let them be proactive about changing enforcement. This can be extremely empowering for children of all races. If done properly, this addition to the curriculum will actually allow students to have a skill set to speak and listen to each other about these topics. Your children will not be brainwashed. They will learn how to disagree in a respectful way and hopefully hear another perspective without ending in anger. This is actually why I teach. I believe if we start this work with very young children and do it all the way through high school, we can change the trajectory of the world. I know that sounds lofty, but this is all connected to mental wellness, suicide prevention, and school shootings. I can show you data on what these curriculums look like and what we have the whole of the community been to start that discussion. In fact, Scott Blair, the vice president of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion at the South University is open to supporting that effort. This work is not about taking away anyone's freedoms or beliefs. It's about making more peaceful and equal community for all regardless of race, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, and ability diversity. It's about community. I know youth of color who have attended this district and stopped attending because they felt physically unsafe. This should not happen, and we can change it if we come together and see each other in the end.
Next, we have Ms. Paul Dale.
Hello, I'm Paul Dale, a community member and parent. You have heard some perspectives here tonight, and I just wanted to add another perspective within our community. Thank you for having the DEI professional development for the staff and administration. How teachers see the students will set the tone for how students see themselves and also how they see each other. I trust that you, the staff, and administration would not move toward DEI practices that would shame any person or group of people and only move toward them. Also, within having been a teacher appreciation week last week, I want to say thank you to all the teachers, staff, coaches, and everyone who takes care of our kids. Thank you.
Okay, that's, that's it for this evening for the first comment section. Moving on to three A, the approval of the minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, school board meeting. Any questions? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, moving on to the superintendent report, Dr. Everson.
Thank you. I just have a couple of updates, and then we have several items, a couple of presentations, and a couple of approval items. Firstly, I just wanted to remind everyone, and we have put this information out, that our high school graduation will take place on June fourth. We are very, very excited. Mrs. Gariello and her team have done a huge amount of work to get the graduation held at the Coca-Cola Park, which is going to be a really nice event. It's a way that we can bring everybody together. We can do one graduation without having to split things into groups and have all of our students recognized in that environment. So we're really looking forward to that, and we're excited to be able to welcome graduates and their families to that event. Secondly, just a reminder to members of the community who have not yet completed our diversity, equity, and inclusion survey. We are preparing to close that survey, so if people wish to complete that, there's, it's still open for a little while. And just to clarify, that survey is actually created by the U.S. Department of Education and National Center for Education Statistics. It's not an internally created survey. It's used nationally to assess participants' feelings around culture and climate within a district. And so that's the tool that's being used, and that's one piece of a needs assessment that was approved by the board back in two thousand and twenty. The goal of this project is a needs assessment based on staff input, student data, and the survey data, as well as looking at our professional development offerings. And then that leads to a recommendation for professional development for staff. Nothing in that proposal is related to student curriculum, delivering instruction to students, nor is it a critical race theory program. It is a diversity, equity, and inclusion program. There are many, many references used to build the programs, and it is not designed to deliver or teach or instruct on critical race theory. It is designed to have our staff members explore issues around race, around diversity, around inclusion, and how to better understand their students and their students' cultural backgrounds in order to support them better in the classroom. That's the extent of that proposal. And that is being funded through our title, two dollars, which are for professional development. Nothing in that program is related to curriculum or instruction for students. If the district were to decide at a future date to do anything with changes to the curriculum, that would go through our curricular cycle process and would be, courses would be adjusted. Those would be presented to the board. The materials for those courses would be available as they are required to be for public inspection prior to the board adopting a particular course. So in order for, for any curriculum, any change whatsoever, to reach students, it has to go through that process, and it has to be open for public review, and it has to be approved by a school board before we get there. So I just want to clarify that we're simply talking about staff professional development. And part of the impetus for this work, and as recently as a couple of weeks ago, I met with a group of our high school students, as I do monthly. And again, many stories from our students of the difficulties they've encountered, of the bias that they have personally experienced, be that racial, be that driven by gender, by LGBTQ status. Our students are suffering. Our students are reporting over and over and over again that they are seeing or experiencing incidents. And so it's important to us that our staff receive comprehensive training in how to support our students and how to manage those incidents and how to move forward to provide our students with safe places and support and education for all students. So that's the emphasis behind the program. That's why we urge you, please, to complete that survey if you have not already completed it, because it does give us a piece of information along with our other pieces to move forward. That being said, Mrs. Deci, the first item that we have is the final reading of a new policy.
Can I just say something? Sorry.
Go ahead, Dr. Smith.
Um, I, I just think this is a good example of, you know, it was a while back when this came before us and the vote happened months ago. If, you know, you have a question, you're not sure, you hear a rumor out there in the community that there's, there's something going on, you know, with your kids, which I can understand, which is upsetting, find out more from the source itself before you go about just driving the rumor mill. It's, it's, it's very frustrating. Because truly, because I know this has come up too, we are not discussing critical race theory. I've never discussed critical race theory, nor have I heard it so much as I have in the last few days. And that's the truth. I'm extremely upfront and honest, and I will always say that. So. My point is, I feel like I should talk to people in front of you. I, I just encourage people, if you have a question about something, or, and if you get an answer and you're still not satisfied with it, still continue going with the source rather than trying to drive up the rumor mill, because I will tell you, obviously, if I heard something that was concerning that I disagreed with, that was going to be taught to my children, I would first ask the principal or the teacher, you know, depending on the grade level. But just, I, I think it's just a good lesson in general. Don't always assume the worst, and those of us that you may have disagreed with in the past are not bad people. And that's.
But my questions were answered.
Moving on to, or, does anyone else have, I think, any board members have any questions? Moving on to four A, the final reading of new policy. Motion to approve the final reading of new policy, two hundred and eighteen point five, students convicted or adjudicated of sexual assault. Can I have a motion to approve, please? Are there any questions? This is the final reading. We have seen this before. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Thank you. Going on to four B, contract.
Thank you. So as we have outlined in prior meetings, the goal moving forward for next year is a full five-day return for students. But we are also aware there are students who will need a continued remote option. And so the administrative team here has been doing a great deal of exploring of current remote options and looking at alternatives so that we can make a more, a robust online option for next year. So, Mr. Roof, do you want to just give some highlights of the vendor that we've selected and the reasons why?
Yes, so over the last several months, a number of administrators across the district and some other individuals have reviewed the existing remote learning program and then met with different remote learning offerings, you know, essentially national offering. At this point, what the district has used up to this point is ELEARN twenty-one, which is a consortium program that operates through the ID twenty-one, and brings together several different resources. After meeting with a number of providers from, you know, around the country, the, you know, the, the adoption academy through MENTHEM for a number of reasons, the primary of which is it offers synchronous instruction in each of the courses that individuals can access throughout the day. And, you know, I'll go into it a little more in greater detail, but it provides an accredited program, thought by, constantly answered by teachers, with synchronous and asynchronous options, as well as having the ability to re-access all of the synchronous content through recordings afterwards. And it will provide a great level of detail of scalable options for the district, meaning that we can increase our level of support in the near term, depending on what type of needs that we have. And I can provide a little bit more insight into that and a little more depth. But part of that process requires us to be able to advertise what the program is, what this MOU is discussing.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Roof. So it's important to have that background as to the program we're talking about. So it's the program formally that was ELEARN twenty-one, which has been in place in the district for many years pre-pandemic. In the past, that program was used exclusively for students who had other reasons to be unable to attend school. One of the items in the collective bargain agreement with our teaching staff was that the district would not advertise it except to students who had already left or chosen to go to a cyber charter. As we move forward into next year, we all recognize as administrators and as teachers the importance of having a robust alternative internally so that we can continue to provide our students who need a remote option with an option that allows them to stay in district. And so our teacher union and Mrs. Bausch and Mr. Greenowald and their colleagues have worked with us in the interest of students and for the best needs of those students by agreeing to the MOU you see on the board agenda this evening, which changes for the upcoming school year, the clause that said we were not able to advertise, and they are now working with us to say there's an understanding. We do need to advertise this program. We do need to make parents fully aware of what their options are. And this MOU now allows us to be able to do that. So this item is on the agenda for approval this evening.
The administration is recommending the approval of the contract of remote learning MOU for the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Can I have a motion for that, please? Does anyone have any questions? Dr. Smith?
Just in terms of what's the discrepancy that we spend outsourcing to, say, a charter school or somebody goes to a private cyber school versus keeping it in-house?
Sure. So for a general education student, it's approximately fifteen thousand dollars. For a student I've been a part of the ID, it's approximately thirty-one thousand dollars. If the adoption academy through MENTHEM is scalable, so it's a little more expensive actually K to five because it's a hundred percent project-based curriculum. There'll be roughly twenty-eight hundred dollars for the entire, for a student who would be enrolled for the entire school year, and approximately twenty-five hundred dollars for a six to twelve student who would be enrolled for the entire school year. However, we do have some flexibility there because obviously the way the fall looks, there may be, you know, additional changes in terms of vaccine eligibility where some people at a younger ages might want to start the year in that type of program and then come out. So the nice advantage to this provider, one of the other advantages is we have a semester-based enrollment option. So we can enroll students based on semester as opposed to a lot of providers require, you know, half a year or to be able to enroll in our compared. So there's a substantial difference, and it's actually substantial. You know, Mr. Mountburrow and his team, we're going to keep traditionally with ELEARN. We use contracted technology through IU twenty-one. We will be keeping all the technology in-house, and him and, you know, Mr. Mountburrow and his team will be able to operate that process, which will also allow our students to maintain, you know, their instructional technology, not have to wait for a divergence between the two. So that also saves the cost, because right now we pay BIU rental fee for all that equipment. But we always maintain pack for every single enrolled student anyway.
Just to clarify what we're doing, this portion of it is just approving the MOU to allow it to be advertised. And then in the second further down, you're going to give us more detail on the household system. Okay, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
Thank you, Mrs. Hi. And just for those listening, all of those costs and numbers that Mr. Roof outlined, those are all in reference to district budgeting and has no cost to parents or community members. Those are just for planning purposes. Right, thanks.
This program may be very dull, some of the customers.
So this is the virtual program that we are exploring as an option to give. And and the advertising of this, the new element here is, as Nord said, this is just the MOU to advertise the program. The reason we're talking about the program is because it's new, because it has a synchronous element to it that we've never before had. So you're explaining that as part of what we need to advertise. Is that correct? Thank you so much.
Mrs. Demme?
I just the next, uh, this is the we're voting on the
Four B.
Not the SLEA one, is that next?
No, you're voting on the SLEA one first, which is the ability to advertise. And then you're voting on the vendor later in the agenda under curriculum.
Yeah, that one.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, so the SLEA one allows us to advertise any remote program we we choose. And then later is the actual program we've selected.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Thank you. Okay, moving on, Dr. Edison to have four C.
Yes, so I'm going to turn over to Mr. Roof, who just has an instructional model update for you.
So there's a couple of things. So first, we start with uh the, you know, flashback to last week. On May fourth, obviously, many people are likely aware that the governor announced that in coordination with the joint vaccine task force, all mitigation efforts in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania um would be lifted as of May thirty first, uh, with the exception of the face mask order, which they stated would stay in place until seventy percent of adult Pennsylvanians are vaccinated. So from a perspective of school, what what does this mean? And I want to provide a very brief update what this means. Essentially, as you recall, the acquisition agreement that you all agreed to and the district signed and submitted on your behalf in November, that also is set to expire on May thirty first. So that will expire on May thirty first. And what essentially that means is that school districts and counties with substantial community spread were required to follow PDE's recommendations for pre-K twelve schools following a case of COVID nineteen, which is the process that we've been following, which is our case reporting process directed to the Penn State Department of Health, which is the maintenance of the case count um database based on what an individual is physically present while infectious. And the idea is that schools would have to close when they hit certain case thresholds within that process. As of May thirty first, that all becomes uh reverts back to recognition if your school is in accounting uh for that substantial community transition. What it means beyond that, uh, PDE announced very quickly on May fourth some information and then retracted it. And then instead that they would release an FAQ shortly thereafter, explaining what this means. It's now maintained and they have yet to release the FAQ. I was in a meeting this afternoon with BIU. And BIU is supposed to be having a uh joint meeting with PDE where to discuss some of the other natures, you know, nature of this and then what this means for planning the future. Obviously, you know, the the process last year was fractured, to say the least. So each week PDE would release some new information and we got this scrambled. You know, all school districts are hoping that is not the case. So we're hoping that this FAQ provides a really clear guideline to what the planning requirements would be for the future. That's just a brief update to that. As we get more information, we would obviously provide that to to you all. The next piece in terms of instructional model, you know, as we've previously spoken in this meeting, you know, the focus for the district is to return to instructional models that were previously offered prior to the pandemic. So focusing on in-person instruction and a remote learning model. When we talk about in-person instruction for the coming school year, we're talking about five days a week, a full schedule. If that's in all across all buildings. And the goal of this is to have and to ensure that our staff group is one hundred percent of their efforts on students sitting in the classroom. When we talk about the remote learning and and provide some brief, you know, information to this to you all, we're going to rebrand and rename the remote learning process Spartan Academy. We're going to do that for a number of reasons. Over the last couple of years, uh, we've referred to this exclusively by the provider, which is E-Learn twenty one, as opposed to a separate process. So what it's happening when you do that is you have a program that is linked to that provider. Um, and we're in a position now where we have to reframe that because the provider is drastically different and so are the offerings. So like I said, we engaged in a comprehensive review of that program, met with that provider to discuss what changes they could make and also met with other providers. So we will be transitioning to a new provider, having the approval of the board. Um, again, Ed Options Academy by MENTUM. The big piece with this really simply is prior to this process, E-Learn twenty one was a one hundred percent asynchronous program. So by shifting to the Ed Options Academy through MENTUM, we're able to get a a program that provides anywhere from twenty to thirty minutes of synchronous instruction per class, then also adds in one-to-one access to teachers and a group work after that. So it's able to provide a more synchronous instructional process that is very similar to what our students are receiving this year. We essentially vetted through this process to find a provider that would do that and commit to that. And that is a very, you know, somewhat difficult challenge when you're looking at the nature of these processes because individuals, especially the very on grade level, are really looking at these for different reasons. And and the process is pretty simple. It's not pretty, it's not simple. So Ed Options Academy is a combination of the synchronous and asynchronous process. Um, as you get older, our students, as we build our uh program model, we can, one, require synchronous instruction. We can also build in the process where you access synchronous instruction on your own. You're learning synchronous model, but individuals are still able to access synchronous model through that process. Again, it's all essentially certified by teachers. However, these are not certified instructors who are Southern Lehigh employees. Uh, they go along all the courses will align with Penn State standards. And then, as I said, will use our technology. We have built an entire website that outlines this. And we're also going to be working with Ed MENTUM to have open house activities where individuals can come and and listen to and interact with the staff of Ed MENTUM. When we look at how we're determining this process, um, we've done a little bit of a different process to engage with our families um that are currently on remote learning. So generally speaking, obviously, we've had a lot of conversations about surveys and other instruments throughout the year. Um, from an administrative, you know, discussion, um, we we had a lot of conversations really focused around what would be the most valuable ways to connect with our families. And we had a number of that had who really advocated for reaching out directly to families and having conversations. So starting last week, we broke up the seven hundred and fifteen students currently enrolled in remote learning. It's probably five hundred fifty one households. And we took a team of fifty people and we started calling them. And we asked them just very basic questions, e-essentially to indicate what their return to school was. This is a really important process so that we can identify where we have to be um in terms of the enrollment. So as of Friday, this this data has changed a little bit, but as of Friday, we've connected with forty three percent of those families. Um, three hundred eight students that were indicating that they will become back to school for in-person instruction next year. Approximately thirty eight students, or five percent of that total, is indicating they're going to remain in remote learning. Thirty five students are three percent are unsure based on a variety of factors. They won't like more informational provider. They're interested in to see when vaccine eligibility comes and so on. And then we got, you know, a large number of students that were essentially every family's been contacted at least twice, but we still have to work through that process. Um, and we need to contact still. Then we did find approximately eleven students that are moving. This information is very important, though, because this is a great unknown here in terms of our planning process and the Dr. Smith's question of the cost related to this versus a cyber charter perspective where the money is extremely far potentially leaving the district to funding a fully remote program through a contracted provider to the potential of being able to fund a district program. As we've talked about in the past, funding an elementary district program in terms of staffing is really a matter of numbers. So what does the number look like per grade and is it eligible? Long-term funding a district program at a secondary level is extremely difficult for a number of factors that Southern Lehigh, most of which have to do with certifications and the very expansive catalog of courses that we have as a district for a medium-sized school. So we have an extremely large number of courses with which are single-digit courses. So being able to offer multi-platform courses without having to do what we did this year in a in a remote instruction process is next to impossible without large hiring process. That being said, when you look forward to what the future looks like of this, there is obviously situations that we already have courses in the district that operate like this. If you are familiar with the secondary curriculum, we do have a health course that operates completely remotely that's operated out of the school. It it is a process and that model could be pursued in the future, but it's not something we can just flip on for for this process. So generally, we're going to continue connecting with these families to see what their intent is. Use that data to determine the final step of this and determine where we're going to be. And we will then push out additional information on the open house program for the Ed Options Academy or Spartan Academy. And then also encourage families to complete the registration. When we're looking at the rest of the planning, we're obviously mitigating a lot of planning for next school year. You know, the the most common question is what is the mitigation factors that are going to be in place? The the reality is it it's very much up in the air. And as soon as we know, we will continue to comment, you know, communicate that with anyone. Any questions?
Just really quick, I I know that um some some people who are at home, they've expressed to me that they have a hard time hearing speakers sometimes at these meetings, the way they're conveyed. So I'm assuming this will be also up online. Um, and I would assume that that open house would take place somewhat soon in order to allow parents to make a decision.
Correct. I'm meeting with the providers tomorrow, those dates. I would assume we'll do multiple dates for that. Um, and and this information is already built and ready to go live. We needed to have the MOU for an order for the uh the website to go live on this. Um, and there's also some very basic promotional materials from the provider. They can also be accessed that are all linked up there as well.
And at this, at this point, we still have the option, depending on what our survey responses are like or what, especially at the elementary school indication is for students who want remote learning to in-house that, um, even if we do move forward with contracting?
Depending on the way the numbers shake out, there is a possibility that there could be a pivot yes because it's a finite, to your point earlier, it's literally just a math problem. If you hit the faster, and I and I were talking about it, you know, multiple times of the course in the last several planning weeks, where do we hit the point where we it's feasible? Um, and really financially viable. Um, and and to the the next component that I'm going to speak about after this, obviously, there are federal grant dollars that can support that process. Um, the other piece with this as well is we can also enhance the existing program, which is one of the other reasons why we went with Ed MENTUM is they have a partnership program where they can train your your staff at an additional level of support beyond what they have. And it's a part of their existing program where you can identify staff members to then provide additional check-in or additional support throughout the school day with students without having to contract a significant number of people. But then you have an individual in the building who's providing that daily support as well. So there's a lot of different layers of the support that they have that are not built in. And the reality is Ed MENTUM is a national corporation that is providing this. And this is what what they've been doing for a number, you know, a significant number. Their elementary curriculum is a hundred-year-old curriculum provider. Obviously, remote learning is not that old.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Roof, um, so this company would be able to provide all the classes that our kids have now? Is that right?
K to twelve?
Yeah.
No, there is no remote provider that'd be able to provide all the classes that we have K to twelve.
Okay, of the the students that are out right now, that's seven hundred and fifteen students. I imagine most of them are high school students, is that right?
Approximately three hundred or so are high school students. So it's it's about the eighties off the top of my head, it's like eighty, ninety, eighty-six in elementary, hundred and six at the IS and a hundred and eight or so at the middle school.
And if most of the high school students want to come back, we can still fit them, right? So will it still five-day-a-week in-person?
Yes. The high school, you know, generally speaking, if you look at the data trends on COVID right now, that's something go away on May thirty first. We have counties on track to be in the moderate range next week. Um, and as I said earlier, though, as of May thirty first, all that information goes away, so.
Anyone else?
Uh, just from Mrs. Parsons' question, did you say the the Spartan Academy has K to twelve, right?
Correct.
So if you want to have a um a remote experience, it is different than E-Learn because it's not synchronous and asynchronous.
Correct, yes.
Substantial difference.
Yes.
That's right. Um, and that would and that would be provided as an option K to twelve.
Yes.
So for folks that still have concerns of whatever reason, or or even before this, people had E-Learn as an option. So they decide that they want um that type of education for their child. Um, first of all, I assume we think this is the best thing out there in that regard.
So in terms of the comparability of the existing platform, there there are some significant advantages. Um, generally, all of these types of programs land on the same same stylistic provider page um because of their ability to have provided this for a long time. Theirs is much clearer when our team met with them. The access to additional help is very clear, it's very processed. They have a very streamlined ability to instruct both parents and students to have access to that. Um, their programs, again, they have, from a secondary perspective, that's still a approval of all the courseware. They have access to some advanced placement classes, Mrs. Parsons' component, but that's not a universal thing, you know, across the board because of the stringent requirements of college college board to get that, you know, program approved. So we're comfortable with the offerings. Um, and they it has been improved offering, markedly improved offering from E-Learn for a number of factors, but primarily that synchronous instruction component is, you know, very, you know, remarkable improvement.
And that's a when they're doing asynchronous with this particular with the with this program, um, is that class only that only our Southern Lehigh kids that are remote? Or are there additional?
There is, there would be potential, there would be additional students, yes.
Um, and but that would be true, I think, of almost, well, first of all, most of the current E-Learns are not synchronous.
One hundred percent asynchronous.
Right, so this is it, okay. Um, and I just, just so folks that I I understand this, but just to reiterate to the folks at home, you know, by choosing this, right, this this is, this is very good. Um, but it also saves the district quite a bit of money, right?
Correct.
So you can choose something that's probably inferior to this or maybe about the same. Uh, but you're going to end up costing this district and, you know, you know, the community substantial more dollars to send yourself to a different charter school, let's speak.
Correct. And any cyber charter school would be a significant cost to the district. But when you look at, you know, and I have linked already as well to the webpage that will go live with this, the previous presentation that Mrs. Shaw and myself did on the cyber charter, um, you know, the way that cyber charters will have on on any school district. The value of this is is simple. You're still a Southern Lehigh school as your student. It is a superior program in terms of what the offerings are. And then we are still also able to, you know, wrap around the student, provide all the supports that we would have on the K to twelve setting. Uh, one of the things that we're seeing right now and and, you know, kudos to the the staff at the buildings. They're bringing students back who are who are able and and willing to try to bridge that gap and some of the conversations, one of the components of these phone calls that we've made home, um, i- is the the reality of being able to have an opportunity to come back to school and experience what it's like before the call. Um, so, you know, I could speak to, you know, Mrs. Lynn Potter who has a number of staff members who are having a number of scheduled activities for their delivery of classes that are engaging them back into the school to kind of rebuild that bond because we're talking, you know, student populations that haven't been in school since, you know, March of twenty twenty.
I guess another positive would be that you would most likely, though, I asked you earlier, it might have, might be some other students from outside of Southern Lehigh, but certainly there would be students from Southern Lehigh, almost certainly, in your synchronous class. So you would have other community members right there in the community, you know, that it could be a cohort for you as part of that, which I don't think you'd be able to achieve through another electronic, uh, that I would be aware, you'd be able to achieve that in any other way through a charter school.
I accept them. This provider, of the providers we spoke to, was the only one that would guarantee us time in synchronous instructional model. That's a very hard guarantee.
And I thought, and maybe you covered it, I thought I read it in materials for this evening, is there a difference in your diploma over this, over at eCharter School?
That's a part of the MOU, yes.
Right, so that's another acknowledgement of this version. Okay. I just think that's important to the public, I just want the public to be fully, you know, folks that are, rightfully so, are concerned about, you know, the remote, I get that, but, you know, if they're looking to try to figure out what they want to do, I hope they come back to our school, yeah, ideally, I think that's possibly what's, I think the current research shows might be best for kids, but I understand that people are differently situated and there's different circumstances, but if they're, you know, continuing to look for remote program, I hope they'll give real consideration to this, right? Isn't that, right, and I don't, I don't think we need to sell that, because I think it sells itself, as long as people fully understand what's available out there, it would be hard for me to conclude that Spartan Academy is not the best.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, just in a second question, that, Ms. Smith's question. I do have a concern, though, that, I was really encouraged to see page six or seven here of the handout, this decision will ensure that the Southern Lehigh School District staff is able to focus 100% of their efforts on in-person instruction, right, occurring in their classrooms, I mean, that is the downside if you were to try to continue to provide remote instruction through our own staff, depending on how class sizes work out, so if you had five, you know, if you had five third graders, right, that want to have remote, and you had to detail out an entire third grade teacher to handle five, you know, then the reality is every other teacher that is in person just increased their class sizes by, you know, three or four, I'm assuming that's a lot of the consideration here, you know, it's a good thing to do, I think the teachers have proven they can do it, and it is awesome, but the reality is, I think it's pretty hard for the district to figure out a way where that choice doesn't also potentially impact the instruction in the buildings. Like you said, unless you happen to get 25 people in the third grade who want remote, then that's about the same size as another classroom, and maybe all that works out, but if that doesn't happen, I hope, I hope people in the community can understand why potentially what we were able to do this year can't necessarily be replicated every year. Is that, would that be a good way of looking at that?
Yeah, I mean, you essentially have to look at what amount of individuals are requesting it versus the availability, and as I said earlier, it really comes down to adoption, only if it came to sixth grades because of the certification challenges, and to your point, you know, one thing we've heard from our staff and our students is that having a focus upon the tasks in hand at the secondary level, you know, is something that they're well looking back, pretty significant in the future, so.
Thank you for your work on this, it looks like it was well researched, and I appreciate that, and I think we have a really good offering for members in the community who don't feel the in-person is right for their family in the fall, it looks like we've provided about the best we can do.
And that was a team of people, that was a team of people, I thank them for that. The next piece is.
Just want to quickly echo that, because I didn't want to go on. Thank you, thank you for taking the time to reach out individually and communicate with families to get great data, thanks for thinking about rebranding this as Spartan Academy, I think that's a fantastic idea, so that the marketing of it is, makes folks feel a part of the community, thank you for explaining that it'll be, you know, quarterly commitment, much like this year, just thank you, thank you to the teachers who spent time on this in addition to everything else, thank you to the administrators, thank you to everyone who did so much and put so much into this to try to get good data to help our families and communities, so thank you, this is wonderful, Spartan Academy, I love it.
The only thing I won't say, the calls was Andrew's idea, she's probably going to accept that I said this, but that, she was, this is something she was telling me for around weeks, and some people weren't involved in that process, and then pretty much every person on this side of the room made phone calls, and in addition to every administrative assistant in the district, which, you know, if you have any idea about their days, you know, they can't find time, so, you know, I told them that I needed time to find time, which is a tough thing, so I do appreciate the fact that they took that time, and we will continue that process, because there's a number of people that we still need to get. The next piece is just a review of the academic and social emotional learning plan for next year, if there are no other questions. So generally, I'm going to start this by just kind of going into the federal grants that are available, because I think it's important to kind of give a brief overview of this, so if you're, as you're likely familiar, the United States Congress has a portion three separate COVID relief grants, you know, for the sake of this conversation, we call them S R one, S R two, the American Rescue Plan, which we can call S R three, and then I have the dates there. To be clear, it's very important when we look at this and we discuss the funding allocation for this, the United States government has used, or should I say, the Department has used Title I A funding formula to determine how the grants were allocated, and they used that from 2019. So they also provided allowable activities that we're allowed to spend that fund on, or those funds on, and they very, very clearly said that we should use this as strategic and sustainable and not try to use it for certain things that we cannot sustain over the course of time. You know, this is very small here, but this outline is the county allocation for this, I share this based on the title, you know, the title component, because as you'll note here, Southern Lehigh is the second lowest allocation in federal grants related to the COVID relief process, so although you see the components in the news and so on, the billions of dollars have been allocated, we have the second smallest Title I population, meaning we have the second smallest allocation, and you'll note that there are certain, like, school districts that are much smaller than us, but where the Lehigh significantly more money is allocated to them through that process. So our total allocation from S R one, two, and three was $3.1 million, or $3,108,243. When we look at this, each of these were passed at separate times, so they have separate end dates, so the S R one, which essentially is the, you know, the CARES Act funding, is available throughout, available for obligation through September of '21. The other piece with S R one is there was a non-public school district proportional distribution here, so while the district received $215,799, we had to give 2.1831% of that, or $4,711, to our non-public schools, where there was a Title I student enrolled. So that was broken up between multiple schools, I worked with those schools, just like Shane does with the Title programs, to determine how they want to spend that money, so the Southern Lehigh share of S R one is actually $211,088, once you remove the $4,000 share for non-public schools. S R two comes out of the second relief fund of the Act, and that's eligible to be spent by September of '22, and the district received approximately $958,000, $958.35 in S R two funds, and then the most recent, obviously, is the American Rescue Plan, where the district received approximately $1,938,20. Now, the American Rescue Plan added the official criteria where 20%, at least 20% of those funds, or $387,242, must be explicitly used to address learning loss through implementation of evidence-based interventions, to ensure that those interventions respond to students' social, emotional, academic needs, and to address a disproportionate impact of COVID on underrepresented student populations. So that language I pulled directly out of the American Rescue Plan, because it's very important when we have to classify these criterias, that where this money is being spent is more or less dictated through criteria within the plan. So you have the three grants, the allocation, you can expect $3.1 million, and then each of them come with specific timelines of September '21, '22, and '23 per use. So when we look at the district's plan for this, there's really three primary characteristics, and then there's other things that you've heard about in terms of like, the changes to the, to the middle school projectors, this other physical plan movements that we'll do, but obviously, we're starting with a summer learning program where we have enhanced summer academic opportunities, we are going to focus pretty heavily on school year supports to enhance data-driven interventions that we have within the different schools, we are going to create an after-school program, because the district has inhabited, you know, in my time here, and in many, you know, individuals' time here, and we're also going to use that money to target Spartan Academy support that we discussed previously, and then looking at school-based mental health, fund mental health programming of the app, discuss the implementation of a K-12 social worker, and then help to fund the professional development support for the incoming school year, which is focused specifically on social emotional learning. So the next number of slides kind of show the breakdown of the targeted program. So when we're looking at summer learning, our goal is to enhance the existing academic interventions while generating some additional opportunities for the students for summer learning. Some of the existing programs that we have are kindergarten literacy camp, which is primarily funded through district budget, the grade one literacy math camp is also district budgeted, and the extended school year program, these are all targeted intervention programs for identified students who need additional support. We also are going to fund a tiered credit recovery program in secondary school, and that's for the middle and the high school funds, that's S R, traditionally, our credit recovery program has been 100% through E21. So conversations with Mrs. Gariello, and Dr. Donahue, and Mr. Cross, identified the reality that having in-person instruction for the secondary credit recovery would be a much greater benefit, generally speaking, the district has not done that because of, one, the flexibility of remote learning, because some of the people have the political that they wanted, and, two, it's somewhat cost prohibitive to Mr. Dickin, who earlier said, you only have a couple people sign out, but you have this program. So the district's going to fund the program if you come in person, correct, Miss Gariello? Yes, if you come in person, it is 100% funded by the district, and that will be in June, July, and five days will be, there'll still be more flexible options, but the support from the in-person staff, I believe, is the most successful way to operate that program. The next piece is an ELD English Language Development Summer Random Program, targeted program that will occur before the other existing randoms, so that we can give students who are identified as English language learners the opportunity to participate in other random programs. Mr. Cross is currently working with district staff, the staff, random programming that's targeted towards various focus areas, we're finalizing that process and building some additional ones, and more information will be shared out with the district on that, and Mr. Jordan and his teams are working on providing something that, you know, is fairly, something that's much more flexible, is we're going to open up our licenses that we play for for the school year, and accept them for the summer month, and provide information to families that have access to those programs throughout the summer, so if families are battling and doing things where the pending program would not be available, they'd still be able to access targeted interventions through the instructional programs, and we're just going to pay for the license over the course of the entire year. When we look at the next school year, what are we going to do with the next school year? The first piece is, we're going to reopen up a K to 12 after-school program, and right now, we're targeting Tuesdays and Thursdays, district-wide, where we staff this program through a number of ways, one, we have our district staff working there, we're also in the process of working with the sales, the education department, to have college-age students come and support that, additional support within that process, and that will be our school buildings, typically two days a week, September through May, and we would provide transportation for that. The next piece is, we're going to increase our K to six MTSS interventions, so we're, you know, essentially looking at our existing intervention programs and adding LTS instructional assistance support to those programs, so we can break those programs into smaller group activities. We have met with various grade-level support staff and instructional staff, and said, what is the best process, and how can we use this targeted money to build interventions and support those interventions? And what we heard from the elementary school level is, rather than hire additional professional staff members, they wanted additional support staff members so they could build the existing interventions and break this into smaller groups that need existing interventions. From a secondary level, we're going to do the opposite, because interventions aren't as robust in terms of having staff interventions, we're going to hire two long-term subteachers at both the middle school and the high school for total floor positions, one certified English, one certified in math, in the building of an instructional support professional in ELD and math. So they will be doing targeted system of interventions, including operating things like a math lab, supporting instruction in classrooms where that targeted instructional support is needed. There's also the addition of a special education teacher at the elementary level, in conversations with Mrs. Gariello, something that we want to do, in an effort to provide an alternative graduation pathway at the secondary level, is pay for a subsidized opportunity for all 10th and 11th grade students to take the PSAT school day, because that's one of the state's additional alternative pathways for graduation, so we would essentially offer a PSAT school day in the building, and all 10th and 11th grade students would take it in the building. What the high school staff come and do is work with the students to link that process up, in which they've already been doing it for a number of years, is build the Khan Academy supports that are free for the law court application, build that in through the existing lessons that happened in Spartan period, instruct the students on how to link their results, and how to build in support from that process. As I shared earlier, also working to hear remote learning support through Spartan Academy, so determine what staff would be best to support based on the number of students that we have, and have that, and depending on enrollment needs, how we can support those students by bringing in additional staff. Mr. Cross is also looking at study skills curriculum for the secondary level, to help him build study embedded, study skills support for students in the secondary process. When we look at social emotional learning and behavioral health, you know, continued contracted services that we have for individualized student counseling, at this point, the district has not paid for the individualized counseling, whether it was used through title funding, which is federal grants, or other safety and security grants, so we can do that through that process, we will also, you'd like to expand that to the IS, so have five days of support at the high school, and then break the remaining days up for additional professional at the middle school and intermediate school. Also looking at continuing the current foundation, student support groups and student assistance program supports, again, this is a generally a $50,000 a year expense that has never been a budgeted item, and that we've always paid for through grant money, so this S R one allows it to extend further. The next piece is, in the discussion to that component of engaging students back in the school and some of the challenges that are to come, our team has discussed the robust need to have a social worker, whether that's a contracted, long-term substitute position, or go out and contract those services through an housing organization, for someone to help support and connect families in need in the community, this is an increasingly significant need, and the ability to have that person to support is important. The last piece is, you know, we've been developing as a team, the district-wide professional development focus for the coming school year, which will be on social emotional learning, relationship building in classroom, and trauma-informed practices, which are part of the requirements for the faculty team, and then also classroom-based mindfulness, so we've been meeting with local providers and building and generating a year-long focus on those themes, and it will be supported through this process. Mrs. Shaw is going to speak briefly on the use of these funds.
Okay, so a common question we have heard, wanting to address, was why can't we use these federal funds in lieu of a tax increase? It's a good question, and the reason that we caution against it is that the goal of our district is to have local revenue that supports our budget. If this is not the case, and we use the federal funds, the district would face a cliff year when the funds run out, and this would put the district in a very precarious situation. Let's take a look at the next slide to understand what this looks like visually. The first year of this slide mirrors what we saw in the five-year outlook when I presented the question, however, instead of the additional $1.4 million coming from a tax increase, we use $1.4 million of the federal funds that were given. Then in year two, I added the remaining $1.6 million of the total $3 million instead of a tax increase again. Expenses were kept the same as the original outlook in both of these years. What you see in '23, '24 is that the revenue of $71.1 million represents the growth in the district at the two and a quarter percent with no tax increases over the past two years. The budget at that point reflects a $5 million deficit. If we in that year tried to reduce the deficit by cash, we would have to pass a 5% tax increase, which would not be possible with the actual limitation. What you can see visually is the clip that I was referring to before. Most importantly, we have to understand what is happening with the general fund balance, we would be reducing it to extremely low levels, significantly below the recommendation.
And any other pieces there, are they required spending allocations that I discussed, that you have to find ways, and for the criteria that require spending allocation areas, and you also want to be able to do the programming that is supporting these programs, intervention programs that we will look at through this process? Questions?
Ms. Kim? Thank you, thank you, Mrs. I, just my question from earlier, skipping back to when you were talking about percentage of S R funding, that's also deducted for private schools, so we didn't get full amount, just my quick question is, do those private schools include cyber charter schools? If cyber charter has a Title I student attending, or are those strictly for traditional private schools? I just, I'm trying to educate myself.
Mr. Addy may answer, I believe that the fund would directly be routed to the charter school because of the Title I student, but because of but because we act as the steward for the Title I funds for the private schools, it would be a Title I student who's a parent in the private school, but I think.
I think I agree with that.
So we're the steward to get to the Title I.
For the nonpubs.
To the nonpubs. All right, thank you. That explains that. I just can't understand the concept. And also just thank you, thank you for developing this essentially extracurricular, a curricular program on top of the curriculum that we already provide, on top of all the planning that had to go into this year. Thank you. That was, that was a very detailed and easy-to-understand explanation. And thank you also for providing that hand-in-hand financial snapshot that allows us to understand how this programming financially impacts. So thank you to both, I see Mr. pointing back to Ms. Shaw. So thank you, Ms. Shaw, and thank you, Mr. for organizing that and letting the board see that tie-in between curricular offerings and financial impact. That was very easy for me to understand. I really appreciate the time that went into that and the development of all of those numerous programs to help kids rebound from these, this year. So just the thanks.
And I will say that this information will remain as it is. You know, I'm going to use the word a draft because if certain monies are not used, we have to then reallocate them for another piece. So there aren't your one and your two allocations in some of these SRE funds, so they may be reallocated in a different way. And as I said, there's also some facilities and other technologies that are not specifically focused toward learning loss or social emotional learning.
Mr. Jimmy?
Just a point of clarification to Ms. Shaw, if I could, in regards to the taxes. The federal dollars, though, are real revenue, right? That's, I mean, that is real revenue then.
Yes, it is.
So while your graph chose to not raise taxes for a number of years at all, we do now have additional revenues that are incoming that we didn't anticipate a year ago to the tune of, you know, substantial.
Right.
Now, they're one-time injections, to your point, that they would stop. But there could be a, while you don't cut them to zero, but a, another option may be to reduce how high we're choosing to raise them, given that we now have an additional revenue source. I understand some of it has to be allocated to certain things. It's not just a free spend. But it is no less a fact that we now have substantial federal dollars that we didn't have earlier when we were budgeting.
That's true. I think the most important thing to just remember is even if you use a fraction of it, that much money that you're generating from your local revenue base and tax revenues are additive. So within the year that you actually implement them, you receive that increased revenue year over year. So whether you use 1.6 of it or $3 million of it, you are still end up with the same type of problem. Your question just might have to be a C.
Right, but at the same time, by not raising in any given year, that's a year that a community member, that's not cumulative either on them. The reverse is true for the taxpayers, right? So by not raising their taxes in the first year, those taxes are not cumulative either. So what you're describing on our end, which is probably seen as not good for the school district and its revenue, is a plus for taxpayers in that they don't see the tax increases earlier and therefore, over time, they too have less tax benefit. Thank you.
Dr. Smith?
I guess one of the questions I would ask piggybacking off of that is what kind of flexibility do we have to bolster support but also allocate some of the funds that we're getting towards traditional paths that we already have baked into the budget?
So that is where literally each of the LGS instructional support professional at both high school and middle school would support existing math and existing ELA courses, whether that's through the ability to have students attend a math or a learning lab or an English lab or provide additional structural support with a teacher in a course for a topic where they might need additional help. The TCSX intervention support is also an existing program where students would be assigned to provide participating TCSX programming in the classes, which would then provide that same existing support. So those two absolutely are that process. And then the after-school program, although it's an incurring after-school, it would provide pretty essential additional support. It's not necessarily occurring right now unless the student book's tied with the teacher or something like that. So that would be a weekly, twice-a-week program where students would be able to meet with teachers to get that additional support. And then, as I said, Mr. Cross says, we're going to also be now supporting there by getting students from the sales of just the hours requirement that they have. So there would be additional staff in there, you know, I use the word staff, but additional future teachers in there to support students in that process.
My final question. So most of this is designed, as I understand it, to provide support to mitigate the impact of a learning law that happens with COVID, correct?
Correct.
So if we choose to not use the federal funding to provide those sports, those supports, then we either would not be able to offer those enhancements and those types of supports or we'd have to use existing budget, is that correct?
Yes, and to that same point, we would have to find and identify areas where the dollars are allowable, you know, to Mr. Dibbick's point. So there are certain components that are allowable, but it's not like you can't just put it on top of salary and benefits and say that it's going to cover salary benefits of existing staff. You would have to be able to find things within, you know, the logic that you could, that would be allowable in senses.
That's helpful, too. And if you can elaborate on that at all, you know, I mean, just describe the limitations, if you could, to educate me about what the limitations are and how that money can be spent. It doesn't sound like you can just trade it out and just say, we'll just use this as a one-for-one exchange for a tax increase. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's easier by your own, I think, just hold on. So examples would be salary and benefits of positions dedicated to salary student achievement interventions or title programming, professional learning opportunities to improve educational effectiveness, material supplies for intervention supplemental programs, specific software technology in the benefit of learning loss related to COVID-19, elevating education of students school-wide at school, improving achievement for at-risk or failing students, title programs for Title I-A, Title I-C, Title I-D, Title A, Title III, Title IV-A. There's a large amount that, you know, I can send you, it's readily available, but the reality is it's not just like a campus standard on top of the existing mode.
Thank you. So again, just to summarize, though, but these are the ways that the administration and the staff have determined are the best ways to provide those supports on this more limited basis over the course of the next, and you said it goes through 2022, is that correct?
Yeah, so 23. So SRE one has to use by September 21, SRE two, September 22, and the American Recovery Rescue Plan, 23, September 23.
And if those funds aren't spent by that time, what happens to them? Do they have to be returned? Use it or lose it?
They'll be sent all the way. I mean, the challenge with this is, you may have seen the newspaper articles of the Alan Dapf who was just saying $144 million. They get to hire a company to help them manage $141 million because of the criteria that we're describing here and to ensure that you're able to fit that criteria to those holes that you have to fit them into. But it also speaks to that, you know, there's also been newspaper articles of the Bethany Mary sort of doing some insight, but when you're getting $48 to $59, there's really much significant difference in components that you can spend on.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Ruff.
Thank you.
Ms. Shaw? Moving on, you're done, Jeff Hudson? Yes, okay. Moving on to 5A, your remote learning agreement. Registration recommends the approval of the agreement between Edmonton and the Southernly High School District to participate in Edoptions Academy for a remote learning platform, ending the final, which is what he just spoke about.
The one thing I want to note, this is initial agreement, is for four or 50 seat licenses. We can increase that at any time. This money is also transferable year to year. So if we did not use 50 seat licenses, it would still be an account to use on subsequent years.
Can I have a motion, please? Are there any questions?
I do have a question, and it's probably for Mr. Audi. It's about the terms and conditions of the agreement. And if you could just make, it doesn't even need to be answered right now, but I guess it's a two-part question. The first part, there's a provision in here that talks about custom learning tasks. Mr. Ruff, sorry. It says that we can modify content, customize it for our purposes if there's an intent for us to do that. The provision in there, there's, it's a two-part provision that says that, you know, we agree to basically give them any of our customizations or modifications. At the end of the lease, that they'll have that and that they can disseminate it. But it also requires us to indemnify them for any kind of, you know, problems associated with that. So I feel like that should be an either or, you know, if they're going to take, if they're going to demand that we give them our customizations, we shouldn't be requiring us to indemnize them.
Are you looking for a mutual indemnification or?
I would defer to you, that's beyond me.
Okay, is that?
I just noticed that provision and I don't know if we typically negotiate the terms and conditions of agreements like this.
Sometimes you're allowed, sometimes.
Sometimes it's not, right? So I just didn't know if that was going to be considered.
I did look at this and it is a standard, it's a standard clause, but we, I'm not certain that this organization allows for modifications to contracts.
Right, that wouldn't surprise me. And I, it may not be applicable, that's why I was sure we would even, you make any modifications or customizations? Yes, or yes, or question?
Any other questions?
Yes, quick question. My question would be that this would eliminate the ELAN 21, our use, Southernly High School's use of the ELAN 21. This would totally replace all of that?
Not until the start of the 21-22 school year. We will still be supplementing coursework in ELAN 21 for the summer because we've already completed that program for the summer program.
And in addition to ELAN 21, I believe I've heard discussed other cyber courts options that, I'm blanking, an Odysseyware or some other type of name for other coursework. Would this replace all of that as well?
So there is one distinct shortcoming of this program that is the driver's education program. So we will have to, myself and the teaching learning group will have to come out and identify driver's education program. It might be that that is still 3121 because that's a certified accelerated driver's education program and Edmonton does not have that. And that's a part of our existing program where you can access a long-term driver training because you must complete a, an academic component of driver's education. And you learn contracts that are separate through a different program as well.
But this contract does not preclude our usage of other services that are not covered under Edmonton, is what I'm hearing.
This is just for, it would be an EdOps Academy this contract.
Thank you. We could still use others if they did not provide, all right, that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Thank you. Moving on, there's nothing under six. 7A, security cameras. Our motion to approve the purchase of Verkata security camera system and licenses. We did discuss this two weeks ago in workshop. May I have a motion, please? Any questions, concerns? All those in favor?
If I could just say, Mrs. Si, I did have, like you said, we discussed this at the workshop and I did have concerns with the number of, so I'm generally in favor. I think technology is helpful, especially on the outside of the buildings. But I do have concerns about the number of cameras, not that it's any more, I think, than what we currently have, although I think these cameras have multiple cameras in them. So in a way, I think they're, they're probably each one of these more, have greater abilities than what we currently have. But at some point, I think we probably should consider, not that all of this is completely proper and legal, but, you know, there is just, the board has its own decision-making to, you know, decide what they think is an appropriate level because there is a, you know, there's a balance with privacy and safety. I mean, mostly this is about safety and I think that's needed. I just did have maybe an issue with the total amount. And I certainly have been a longtime proponent of cameras when other people weren't in the past. But for me, I feel that maybe we're sort of meeting a point where we're in the country itself that we just have a lot of cameras out there. And I had a little bit of a problem maybe adding to the total. But I do certainly understand the great benefits to safety, which is why I think the outdoor ones are totally fine. I don't have an issue with that. And even certainly the inside ones in certain places, I think, are appropriate as well. I guess at some point, like I said, it's just finding a number that you're okay with. For me, this is a little bit more, and there's Christ tags that are attached to this, too. So for me, I'll be voting against it, not that I'm against it in total, but maybe just the amount. So I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Mr. Malberg, I didn't know if you wanted to address, I know we did address some of that two weeks ago. If you said anything that you wanted to add to that?
No. I feel that's Jeff's opinion. I don't think he said anything against the system. He just was talking about the amount, so.
So is it all those, oh, Dr. Smith, do you have a question?
And I did want to just clarify, that is roughly the same amount of cameras we already currently have. We're not adding.
That's enough. Correct.
And all in public places, so they're indoors, but they're all in public areas, hallways, things like that.
There's really no issue of expectation of privacy, so that would be okay.
And they were all determined to be strategic locations based on past incidents, correct?
Yes, and this is a direct replacement. So it's the same locations they're in now, it's simply an upgrade to new cameras. There's no changes to locations, there's no changes to number amount. It's just a direct replacement, new for old.
And it's less expensive than what we have?
Yes.
Okay, so back to the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And abstentions? Moving on to business and finance. 8A, approval of the bill's list, motion to approve the bill's list dated May 10. All, any questions?
Yeah, just a comment. Just quickly scanning through the bill's list, and it's about just under $400,000. Quickly adding up all the charter school payments, it's about $150,000 just to the charter schools for that period of time, which is astronomical.
Yes. Yes, it is. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? 8B, the treasurer's report, motion to approve the treasurer's report investment report for the month of April 2021. Can I have a motion, please? Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? 8C, the 2021-22 appointment of solicitor, motion to approve Sweet Stevens Katz Williams as a school solicitor for the 2021-22 school year. Can I have a motion, please? Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, Mr. Audi.
Thank you.
Approve the bonding of the board officers, motion to approve the continuation of bonding of the board treasurer and board secretary at the current level of $50,000. Motion to approve the continuation of bonding of the board treasurer and board secretary at the current level of $50,000. This is the annual agreement. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Roof, second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Onto 8E, the senior rebate program, Mrs. Shaw.
All right. So recently, we had discussed implementing every pay program for individuals that are CC5+ and earning less than $35,000 a year. In the previous presentation that was given to the board, you had asked me to look into whether or not we could provide a rebate based on sliding scale, to verify the effect a potential 3% increase would have on individuals that apply for the state program. After further discussion with my contact at the state, they were unable to divulge the specifics for each individual taxpayer that applies for privacy reasons. But I did though want to discuss another option. The average taxpayer in Southern High School District would be $143 increase to their tax bill if a 3% increase is approved. If we offered a flat $143 rebate to those who qualify, we could potentially reduce the house of the program to $43,000. I also wanted to mention that the largest unknown is how many participants, how many participants we would have. And this would be the first time we would run a program like this. So if we lower the rate to a flat $143, we could have triple the amount of state participation and still remain within that original $125,000 of expense. So I just wanted to, you know, follow up with you, give you this other option, and also see some guidance on whether you would like to consult with us.
Any questions?
I would like you to move forward with this. I, we've really been looking for something like this for a while. And I think it's only fair to our seniors if we can do whatever, I mean, this isn't too much, really. I know how much our taxes are, but whatever you can do, I would appreciate it.
Anyone else?
I have a question. Are there any requirements for the real estate value to be eligible for this program? Can you have a million-dollar house and earn less than $35,000 and get your tax refund credit?
It's solely based on income and your age and the income threshold. It's there to find out if they're less. The way the state runs it is its tier. The maximum you can get is $650, and that's for individuals that are earning $8,000 or less.
So I guess personally, I feel like, like it would be important for us to have a component that acknowledged that piece for eligibility.
Is it inclusive of all sources of income? Like capital gains?
Yeah, totally.
I think it's still unknown is how many people would take advantage of it.
Right. And so the final thing that we had was on the state program that was running in 2018. And for our district, there were 301 participants.
So you can change this. You could do it one way, one year, then change it depending on how many people participated.
Right. So the final year is kind of the most critical. And what we would be doing, obviously, is gathering all of that information, address information, tax bill information, so that you could, you know, craft a more tailored approach the following year. There are just going to be a certain amount of unknowns that we have to ask if we are going to move forward with something like that.
So I just wanted to add, so you're suggesting, I'm sorry, I can't see that far. So you're suggesting a flat $143?
It's another option.
Right, so that's one of the, well, that's one of the options that you're suggesting. And for, and estimating that, we were just going to guess that perhaps around 300 or how many people, I'm sorry, what would be?
You would be assuming the same that participated in the $143.
Okay, that was 301, okay. And is it, but it's correct, but it's a bit of an unknown, because we could have 500 people apply, right? Or 600, so 600 applied under the first model, it would potentially be 200.
Right. Based on how we, if we structure it exactly like the state program, yeah.
And in the second one, it's just a flat fee regardless of where you fall.
It's $35,000 a member, it's free.
Ms. Gaiman? That, okay, thanks. The question I had was, in your earlier presentation, you said that an easy way to establish this, to set it up and organize it, would be to predicated on those individuals who did indeed apply for a PA 1000.
Correct.
All right, so would, would this, this suggestion be that individuals who are asking for this, let's say $143 discount, would they have to supply their PA 1000 tax form submission in order to prove that they were eligible therefore? And it would, it would be for the prior tax year? So if your tax year is, say, well, not for this year, for 2021, you would have to go add your 2020 PA 1000 people?
We would actually go one year and a year. But right now, people are filing for their 2020 tax year. So if we were to implement this for this year, we would have to provide a receipt of funding in group for 2019. This way, there's absolutely no question as to whether or not they were eligible. And we also don't have to prove that within our business office. We can use that as a receipt. It makes the processing of it very quick and also very efficient. And then also you already have that limitation that they were approved from the state.
And also that would guarantee that, because we do know that 301 people applied for that. We know there would not be an, because it's one-year retroactive, one year, you're looking back one year. So we know if everyone applied for this, all 301, there wouldn't be 302 out there. It would be limited to those 301, because that's a firm data point that we know, correct?
They would have to provide that 2019 information, yes.
And that, right now, you know that, are you, I'm sorry, was it 301 from 2018?
2018.
Ah, so you don't know 2019 yet?
Yes.
Okay, understood, thanks. Mr. Dymick?
It sounded like you thought the cost of administering this to the district?
It would be handled by my business office internally, so not our department.
Yeah, there's labor costs to use, so to speak, not, not bill dollars, but I just want to make sure. Is this going to be an issue for your staff to implement, in your, in your opinion? It sounded like you thought it'd be relatively efficient.
I don't think so. At one point, this district, and they still continue to offer a tax to rural programs. And if you remember, we have had zero applicants for a couple of years. But at one point, many years ago, I want to say almost a decade ago, there were definitely more applicants than there were at the office at hand in the end at that point also.
Mr. Ms. Gaiman's point, Ms. Nord's point, you know, just a little bit of the unknown of, you know, this for budgeting purposes. Is there an option three where you could have a pool of money? Where you could have a sort of administrative pool of money where you, you know, you could estimate it's going to be around, like if we could, we were comfortable with it around the 300 from 2018, you could figure out approximately what that pool of money is. If for some reason 500 people are out there that we don't know about, then, you know, you could have a per-share reduction to, you know, basically fit people within that. Does that, that make sense to you or no? I'm just, I mean, I'm for, I'm for it, I get it. I am a little wary at any time of just sort of budgeting for something that, you know, going down the road where you don't exactly know what that thing is. It would be, I think, a little bit easier to digest if I knew there was a number that it could not exceed for budget purposes. And then, then you could reduce if somehow we went up against that number. And if you didn't reach the number, obviously, it's not, not, you don't get more. It's just that you get what this is, but if it turns out 400 people apply, we thought 300 were applying, and now you busted the cap, now the reduction for 400 goes down. Does that make sense?
Right.
Is that a possibility?
I think anything's a possibility, and all of the things we'd like to structure it.
Would that be difficult to administer that way?
I think we have to probably put a cutoff on when applicants could, you know, could submit. And then we have to take a look and see after that point how many applications are recruited. Because it could go the other way too, right? If you spend crap, that guy, let's say $30,000, and I only get three people that apply.
I didn't want it to, but I did say, I didn't want it to go the other way.
No, but I can say like, so you would have to.
And I'm all for tax cuts, but I don't, I don't want three people getting, you know, $4,000 off of taxes.
Well, conversely, yes, all right, so I think that's, it's an interesting concept. But I do wonder, you know, how you market it then, because then people, it's an unknown. So people don't know whether it's going to be $50 or $20 or $200. So I think that, that might, it's, seems like it might have more challenges than the actual application and execution.
But at this point, we're offering zero, so just saying we're offering a discount, I mean.
Yeah, I think it's better than nothing. And I just wanted to actually go back to Dr. Smith's point, because I think it, it's important for consideration. And again, in theory, so, especially with housing values, as much as they've increased. So, you know, our goal, right, is to provide relief for the people who are most in need. I don't know where, how you put a cutoff on that, right? Because you could have somebody who, for a variety of circumstances, has really limited income now, but their house has increased, been appreciated significantly over the years, especially last couple of years. So, you know, I don't know if, if there are other, you know, programs that factor that in as part of the criteria or not.
Yeah, anecdotally, Ms. Nord, I think you're right. I mean, that is sometimes some of the people that, you know, it sounds kind of, you know, it isn't the way you think of it, but my understanding is anecdotally, you know, you've lived in this district for 50 years, and your house has appreciated, because maybe you have five acres with it, and the house's square footage is larger. But you living in there, you don't have the income.
Right.
And so actually, it's those people that sometimes bear the greatest burden, because of course, they're paying off their millage rate. So while they may have that in their estate, so to speak, or something, they're actually some of the most burdened. So, well, I understand, you don't want to necessarily give a huge break to a millionaire senior, I get that. But the, the cost of real estate in some ways is one of the, not the best way possibly to gauge that, because I could foresee some people in the house, like I said, that they bought 30 years ago, it's appreciated to the point where it's a $600,000 house now, but, you know, then they're paying taxes on a $600,000 house, and they don't have the income really to do it. So, I don't know, I don't know where I leave this on that. I think it's kind of a difficult thing to measure. I would say it would be best left alone.
Right, I mean, I think income is pretty good.
Just a clarification, sorry, I can't really look at you and talk into this microphone too. We're only doing this for owners, correct?
Correct.
So unlike the PA 1000 form, which is owner or renter, we're only considering this for owners of loans.
I think that makes a lot of sense in there for you.
Agreed. Because it's a real estate tax, a renter would not pay us.
Correct.
Ms. Gaiman?
Thank you. Another question is that ultimately, with what you, your, your best estimate would be that this could potentially cost the district $43,000. And our discussion tonight is, correct, I'm sorry, correct, $43,000?
If you just get a flat.
I'm sorry, with a flat, yes, with a flat $143. My, I like Mr. Dymick's idea of putting a cap on it. I think that, that helps us all frame it. I also would like the idea of, right now, I'm looking at this thinking that, yes, we want to provide tax relief to our seniors and those earning less than $35,000 a year who are real estate owners. But it would help me to decide if I could frame this from the perspective of what does, I assume this is, we'd be taking $43,000 from our annual budget. And so it'd help me frame it if I knew prospectively if this was going to be implemented this year, what the administration would suggest reducing in our budget by up to whatever that money Mr., as Mr. Dymick referenced, for the purposes of this statement, I'm just going to say $43,000. Where is that coming from in our current budget if we implement it this year? Like, I like the idea of moving forward, and I want to move forward with investigating this. And I think this discussion tonight has been very helpful to get us honed in on specifically what we'd like to look at. But it's hard for me to make a decision, because right now, I'm just looking at the seniors earning less than 35, who I want to help, but I want to equitably balance that across the community. And where's that money coming from as far as from our students and our staffing and our facilities? Is that?
If I were to summarize, that would basically work around, fortunately, the number to put a camera in $1,000, that will be expanded, and then also how we will fund it through the board.
Yes. Is that enough for you to?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to 9A. The motion to approve the anticipated purchase of natural gas spaces through Providence MZG Consulting. This is for November 2021 through October 2024. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Roof, second.
Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Moving on to human resources. Does anybody object if I take 10A through J? Well, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Roof, second.
Or any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? We would like to acknowledge that Mrs. Chromiak, I think, is here this evening, that you will be missed, I think, at the IS. But congratulations on your new appointment. We're excited to see what you're doing as you do at Hopewell. And I'm, I'm sorry, I did, I did say Mrs. Chromiak, and I think it's Dr. Chromiak, as of, as of now. So congratulations on your, on two things, on your Hopewell appointment and on your doctor. Okay. Moving on to 11A. Election of the board secretary. A motion to elect Ms. Kohler as our secretary for the period of four years, effective July 1, 2021 through June 2025. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Roof, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Ms. Kohler, thank you for keeping us on track. Communications? Nothing about any new business?
Jeff had his hand down first.
Okay, Mr. Dymick?
I guess, I just wanted to address my own behavior tonight. I encouraged the first speaker to disregard the prime limit. That was way out of bounds. It was wrong. And so I wanted to apologize to you, because the side's hard enough running these meetings. You don't need the school directors.
I appreciate that. I actually wanted to acknowledge that it was a little chaotic at the beginning, so I appreciate you saying that. And I, I do want the public to understand that. We don't, our intention is not to cut people off, but it is a business meeting, and we have to have policies, and we have to follow the procedures. And, you know, we've been consistently saying three minutes, and we can't pick and choose when we want to be or less. So I appreciate you acknowledging that, thank you.
Yeah, 100% right. And I apologize, Mr. Audi, who was also trying to do it very bad. I apologize, apologize to the board and the community, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leifert?
Yes. I would like to make a proposal in the form of a motion that we record our board meetings and make them available on our YouTube channel, which seems to be the trend that most districts have gone to. Salisbury, Saucon, East Penn, many others have done that. And I've heard a lot in the last couple of months from a variety of people that they'd like to be able to go back and view a meeting because they couldn't participate during this time, or they had issues where they couldn't hear the feed. If we were to record them, offer them for a six to 12-month period, and then take them down, I think it would be a benefit to the community. So I'd like to make a motion that we record our meetings, make them available for six to 12 months, and then remove them from the YouTube channel.
Is there a second?
You know what, I'll second it just for the point of discussion.
Okay. So.
Okay, so, does anyone like to weigh in?
I just have a question, I think from what I remember when I initially came on.
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
Sorry, from what I remember, I believe near the beginning of my term, about in 19 or 20, we discussed this a bit, I remember at open board meetings, and I don't remember what the, my understanding was that we were advised not to, at that point, for legal reasons, and that, so I don't know if you have any comment, I just would be interested in knowing more about, I think there was some discussion as to if a student's name was mentioned, or if there was certain language, for example, use that was offensive that was reported, that, you know, that's what I remember, I am not sure, so.
It, it may have been, I, I don't know what you were advised, it may have been valid, but I will say that there's been a sea change since COVID, and it is fairly common practice, so I, I don't really see any legal impediments to doing it, it's, as Mr., as Board Director Rice said, it's done in many districts, and I think it's just a matter of choice.
I know, when I tried to watch our meeting a few, a few weeks ago, I had so much trouble, it was, you can't see the presentations at all, there's no camera that shows over there, so if it's not in the agenda, you have no idea what was just presented, I don't especially want to be recorded, and I like the idea of doing that, I'd rather it was just livestream, but I do think the presentation should be shown to people that are looking or watching it live, anything not that.
You said what should be shown, or?
The presentation should be shown, the camera angle is right here, so you don't see anything over there, and I do think afterwards, everything that's been presented, if it's a slideshow, it should be online, I don't think I would like it live YouTubeed, but I do think that we have a pretty big problem with the presentations.
We also have a problem with speaker comments, they, people can't hear them at home.
So I, is that something that we can improve here versus recording and keeping them for six to 12 months?
Yeah, I mean, I think that was part of the discussion years ago, not, not years, years ago, but there, you know, there was costs involved, you know, I think if you're going to do that, we probably, but, you know, not, obviously, COVID hit, we weren't prepared to do this, and so it's sort of everybody's fault, and that not in the district, it's just sort of second rate as it is now, again, not, not anybody's fault, we're just doing what we can do, but if we were going to move in that direction, then, you know, I think we ought to look at spending money to sort of do it right, so, to what I think is some people's points already, that, you know, the entire context of what we're talking about is captured, that people's views and statements are accurately recorded and can be understood and heard, that they can hear a back and forth, so that you're not just getting somebody's response and you don't know what it's from, so, yeah, and look, it's, you know, I don't know, I think we all, I mean, look, I have, you know, it's a public meeting, and yet, I mean, but you do stupid things like I did tonight, and, you know, and it's there forever, but, you know, that's the life, you know, I guess that's what we're living in now, so, and we, you know, and it is a public meeting, we have to own our own actions and words, I don't know if six months to a year, you know, maybe a shorter period, it'll allow people to view it, so I, I think it's, I think, just my opinion, I think it's certainly worth looking at, but I, and I'm not a big fan of tabling things, but, you know, I would like to know, you know, I'd like to hear from Mr. Malbert about what the costs would be involved, or is getting a little bit more professional, I'm sure people have it, I mean, they record various governments across this country, so some software vendor or somebody out there is willing to take our money to do it, right? So, I, I think it's definitely worth a conversation, I think I'd probably be in favor, but I'd like to certainly know quite a bit more about it, see what the policy would look like, I guess we'd have to have a written policy about it, so, I, I don't think I'd be prepared to vote on it tonight, but I'd like to hear about it going forward, and I forget what we got to do to table something, but if that requires a motion or what that involves, I'm happy to motion it.
I agree, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Audi, I'm not, never interrupt the solicitor.
I just wanted to make a Robert's Rule suggestion, if, if you're, if you're not prepared to take it up at your next board meeting, rather than table it, I would, I would move to just postpone it to a date indefinite.
Is that what you're suggesting, Mr. Dimming, then?
Yes, that's what I'm suggesting, good point, I don't think we'd be prepared to talk about it next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Audi, I just was going to agree with Mr. Dimming, that if we're going to, I guess I'm confused with Ms. Parsons' suggestion to, not confused by her suggestion to record, but I'm confused about how if we currently recorded, your, your frustration is it's difficult for us to hear, because this has been put together in a pandemic situation, we acknowledge that Mr. Dimming would like to investigate what our options are, and it would include an investment, but if we just start recording this, I don't think that's going to work, because that was your point, Ms. Parsons, correct? This is, if we just start recording this, this is not transparent or helpful, and to Ms. DeSai's point, we would better serve our community with much less financial outlay in the meantime, if we found ways of the community could communicate with the board and the administration about where those difficulties and those miscommunications are, and if you hear about something at a board meeting that you couldn't hear, or you'd like more detail on, or where was that public slide, there are ways in which we can bridge that gap and be more communicative if folks identify, other than, you know, if they reach out and identify how that gap could be bridged, so I agree with Mr. Dimming's, I'm not prepared tonight either, because I don't think we have a viable solution with just recording this.
Well, I would agree, I'm not ready to vote on it, I'd like to see information on improving our, our, the audiovisual equipment, and as of right now, I would say I'm not in favor of recording them, absolutely livestreaming them and being able to see the presentations, I think is very important, but that's, yeah, that's where I'll fall in that. So, Mr. Dimming, are you going to make a motion?
Motion to postpone?
Motion to postpone, okay, dated definitely, can I make a date definite?
Okay, I'd ask, the motion's postponed, postponed no later than six months.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Leifert, anyone else? Abstentions? Okay, thank you. For number 14, graduate study for information only, and visitor comments, we do have two people signed in, Mrs. Maria Alt.
Ms. Everson, you stated tonight that this DEI proposal has nothing to do with curriculum, but this proposal, which I have right here, has a three-year action plan, which includes recommendations regarding the development of student initiatives associated with diversity, inclusion, and equity across all grade levels, in addition, you said that it's not critical race theory, but I have right here, under, on page six, under reference, under bell, critical race theory, also in your community update, dated April 30th, to the community, you said this three-year plan will guide the next phase of our work in this area, beginning with comprehensive professional development for staff, in order to support that work and future curriculum work, which again suggests that, you know, when you're training the teachers, it's going to trickle down to the children, and Ms. Rine, you have mentioned about a rumor, I'm not sure what rumor you're referring to, but I personally did my research on Dr. Allen and all of the authors in this references, and they all strongly support critical race theory, and I agree with you, I had questions, I have my email here, pages of questions and concerns that I addressed to the board, and no one from the board answered my questions or concerns, now going back to mention my speech, I propose, instead of this DEI proposal, that we establish a new committee to determine a better course of action, and steps that can be taken when a student presents with racist behavior at Southern High, some examples of what those steps could be, one, counseling to help get to the core of the problem and help that student realize the impact of their behavior, two, help the student develop a positive character, three, hold the student accountable, four, disciplinary actions including expulsion and warrants, and five, help kids stand up for themselves, in conclusion, note we can adequately discuss this fundamental topic in three minutes, but I am requesting the school board to sit down with interested parents instead of moving forward with this diversity inclusion and equity proposal, which is damaging because it looks at each person by their race and the color of their skin, the student needs to understand and be taught that it is hard work, persistence, consistency, commitment, that will carry them forward for the rest of their lives and will be the driving forces to achieve their goals, I thank you very much.
Okay, next we have Mr. Depplestein.
Thank you, Superintendent Everson spoke earlier about several incidents in the district, and a number of conversations that she has had with concerned students to justify the support of the initiation of the diversity, equity, and inclusion training. As a parent of three children in the school district, I am naturally concerned about Superintendent Everson's safety, Ms. Everson implied that these incidents were relating to bias and discriminatory actions by some students against other students, Superintendent Everson said that she has met with students regarding these incidents and specific concerns, I would ask, are these meetings with students being documented, should parents be concerned? Shouldn't parents be made aware that these concerns are pervasive amongst the students? Thank you.
Thank you, that concludes our visitor comment. Executive session, we do have a need for executive session after our meeting today, and I have a motion to adjourn. Thank you.